Comment on our regular meeting, but whichever of you are here, if anybody would like to speak to the board, make comments to the board, then we'll start to give you that up too. Can I see your hand? Danny?
Yes, sir.
Stand up for me.
First of all, I want to say this. About to sudden, you guys are going to discuss tonight. And I want to compliment Ronnie Haven, Ronnie Taylor, Evan Corrigan, Jim Tate, and Chris Higgins. I attended almost every meeting about the ball field. I finished it. Got my mouth shut. I think these commissioners that we have right here right now have worked out of it. They've worked great together on this subject. Our ex-commissionsers in the past involved a piece of property. And I don't know that we did the homework that this group of commissioners has done. You know, I got 11 grandkids, and I love them all about it. I'm not here speaking because of Danny McGahan. I'm speaking because of my 11 grandkids. And part of my 11 grandkids' place is softball. And you know what? I hear their mother, and their dad, and Wayne, thought they were a place to play softball. I agree we need a place to play ball, guys. But I don't think that the counties that these commissioners have found about this piece of property. I don't want 40 years from now, one of my grandkids be standing up here in this room. And there need to be a new school built. And they say, hey, what about that piece of property I took on the old car, Jake? We've put enough burden on our younger generation already. Can't use that piece of property for that. Will we play ball there? Sorry. This county's went through enough on buying pieces of property that we couldn't properly utilize. If we're going to buy a piece of property, then we've done your homework. If my grandkids decide to build a school there in 40 years, they need to be able to. I got a piece of property down on 28th that reminds me of this piece of property a little bit. My father, being the man he was, he knew that pine folks in Macon County had to have electricity. Our country come to him, made him an offer for a light award. He let him have it because of just going cow pasture. But I got a grandson right now that would love to build a house down there on that beautiful building right in under that fire line. Your real estate people tell me, if it ain't worth $3,000 to nothing, because that's the same circumstance with this property out here, if you can't do nothing with it, except make a cow pasture out of it, I think you guys have done it well. And I want to congratulate everyone that you did it. You know, it would be wonderful serving as a county commissioner if we had a crystal ball that we could just look into and know what tomorrow brought for our children. Gentlemen, you don't have a crystal ball. It can just done its homework. And I want to question those there, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you very much. Danny, come back any time you want to.
Is there anybody else that's here that would like to speak to the board? All right, hearing none. This was a continuation meeting. We were discussing the archaeological phase one survey of the property, part of the method property the other night. And there were, I guess, some unanswered questions that we just wanted some clarification. So we asked for that, and the board members, we agreed unanimously to continue the meeting until tonight. So, Ms. Thornton, I'm not sure who is going to present this presentation. How do you see that?
Mr. Mason, I believe, is going to put together a requirement for us to patient that I find that might be, when you sit on your screen, the screen up here, concerned with the issue. The issue came up about the consideration of the flood areas on the property and whether it could be used for the purpose or not. And Mr. Mason, along with Ms. Fad, and Ms. Boyer, and whoever else, maybe himself, that can look at a presentation. So they will like to present their past, their reports, and board make some decisions on that. So hopefully this will maybe clear up some questions that somebody might have, and we'll see what the answer says. So, I think Matt's going to lead it. He may have some backup from the other guys, but I think he's going to be the founder, presenter of this.
Okay. For Matt?
Thank you, gentlemen. Parker Farms Recreation Complex. I'm going to give you a short 10 to 12 slide presentation on what we found in the last few days of what initiative we took. This first slide is the existing property of Parker Farms as it exists today. In our initial discussions about the proposed project, we were asked to look at the onsite analysis and mapping analysis of the proposed project. Under the mapping analysis, obviously, we looked at floodplain issues and watershed regulations. Finally, we were asked to compare the project with the proposed project with existing landings regulations available today. We had several site meetings and determinations that came out of those meetings. County staff conducted a site meeting with Mr. David Brown, an Army Corps of Engineers. We discussed with Mr. Brown wetland delineations and existing water feature on the property and how to deal with those issues. Additionally, county staff met with archaeologists to discuss the physical historical sites that were present onsite. County staff also made several other site visits to ensure counties were addressed in order to achieve compliance with all regulatory agencies that have been involved. Now we're back to the special flood hazard area. Our office is required to make sure that all developments within the special flood hazard areas in Macon County is compliant with Macon County existing flood orders. The site at Parker Farms is partially located within a special flood hazard area. Therefore, we are required to ensure full compliance with Macon County existing flood This map represents the existing feature that we compiled over the last few months. The blue hatched area and the purple hatched area represent flood hazard areas. That's the purple area being the floodway, and the blue area is being the floodplain. The orange line around the property just delineates the property itself. That's just showing what the property boundaries are. And you'll notice that there's a blue hatched area sort of in the center or the heart of the property that's your wetland delineations. And then there's four odd shaped red circles that represent the historical preservation sites of the archaeology. This is the same map we saw the other night from our archaeologists. It shows the proposed design with the overlay again of the archaeological historic sites. So we'll have something that we can compare to if we have any questions. The proposed design, I guess the question of the night is, does it all work? The preliminary layout for the recreation complex of Parker Farms will be in full compliance with the Macon County flood order. We can accomplish the proposed development of the project without any fill material being placed in the special flood hazard area.
Quick, can we just make the presentation?
If you don't mind. Proposed design to Cloverleaf. The map to the left shows everything up to this point in the map, and then we overlaid in purple the Cloverleaf baseball field because they seem to be the most important part of the design and how they're going to relate to the floodplain issues. Fields one and two are in the big Cloverleaf. It's the upper two fields. Field on the left is field one. The field on the right is field two. And then field eight is the small field on the little league Cloverleaf. It's also got some floodplain delineation on the house on the next slide. Fields one, two, and eight are partially located within a special flood hazard area. Fields one and two currently have between four and five feet of positive drainage from home plate to the outfield and should be able to be constructed as a proposal. Field eight can be used as proposed. There's a note there that says we were unable to verify drainage due to existing vegetation in the location. Or the field can be reduced in size to create a smaller field for T-ball teams or coach This next map, everything's blown up. This is the large Cloverleaf for fields one through four. Again, field one is the upper one on the left-hand side. Field two is the upper one on the right-hand side. Field one has four feet of positive drainage from home plate to outfield. With the existing drains currently the way it is, it's just a little finish grade on the side for that field alone will allow the drain properly as it used, no fill material on the floodplain. Field two is very similar to that, except it has more drainage. It has another foot of drainage. It has five feet of drainage from home plate to outfield. Finish grade on it, polish it up, and you've got a baseball field. No fill material will be brought in before it has it there. Finally, we have the smaller Cloverleaf for the little league field. We have field eight, which is the small field on the left-hand side.
Where?
The small, right there.
That little?
Yeah. That's the only field in the little league Cloverleaf that has any flood hazard area issue with. As I mentioned before, we weren't able to shoot the grade because you see there's a large patch of pine tree between home plate and outfield. The solution to that is either, once we get it grubbing clear, we'll look at it and see if it can probably be drained. If not, the other alternative is to shorten that field, bring the outfield line in where it's outside of the floodplain line. That would be considered a T-ball field or a five, six pitch. Obviously, a smaller field.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Jack, do you have anything to add?
Not really. Mr. Mason's going very well. We did on-the-ground research, and Mr. Adams did the streets, and we agreed that the grade as it is on the field area won't be an issue at all. Once it's ready, start playing metal and set here.
Uh-oh. Yeah, sorry, Seth. Maybe you can take this side. Back to that, Matt. You don't do backfield field. On these little fields?
On the little fields, the one field that we may shrink, all we would do is basically make about 120 feet, which is ideal for T-ball and coach pitch, which right now is our largest group in boys and girls. So that age group, it doesn't hurt that we found a smaller field, but they're not going to hit it very far anyway. And actually, if we went to 128, seven mates could play on it also. They would be able to get home runs, and those kids might really, really enjoy that side of it. But as it works right now, that won't affect the use at all. Because on that field, the way it sits right now, to stay out of the wetlands, it's going to have to be 190 foot anyway. So it wasn't going to be a regulation little league size. So shrinking it doesn't affect the plan hardly at all. And going back to the positive drainage, on a baseball field, you want 1.5 to 2.5% fall to be able to get water off of it. And whenever we went out and shot it, that's exactly what we have there. So on those two fields, there's going to be very little stuff done other than the final grade, not care to come down. But in the upper two, obviously, they're out of the floodway where the flood's on. So we can fill on those, but we're pretty sure that they're going to basically fall the same way too.
So just to clarify on the question we had just now, is anything that we're going to do here, would it be in violation of our own ordinance or any kind of state ordinance or anything to build? Be able to?
The only way the design has changed is it's gone from every ball field to be on the same plane, to the upper two fields to be on one plane, and the lower two fields to be on the same plane.
When we worked out there, I know Ron Haven nights and Louis Henley nights, he graded them, did you guys evolve him in this?
We initially came back with him. He was up there, and we shot gray on side. And when we started looking at bringing field in, that was our first look because I thought we were looking to. Louis actually said, no, there's no way to do it like that. And we asked Louis to come out and shoot some grades with us and see what we could do. And what we found out was five feet of fall at home plate outfield.
Jack, excuse me.
Can you back up? I just got one question. I don't know. We were out there looking at this thing, Seth. I think we need to have this conversation with them. They might even be ruined on those, on those field, to move them up the hill completely out back. Do you think that that still could be feasible?
Possibly. We could slide them to the rocks and to get them to put them out of the floodway too.
And now, on these four fields there, to have little league tournaments, you know, or play little league, how many of those fields are sanctioned little league field?
Those sites are right there, three of which will be. And then also, we will be able to have temporary fence on the bigger field. You always got to build a bigger field if you can.
So for the T-bowers, if we did slide that, we can still have a temporary fence for the T-bowers and the coach pitch?
Yeah, even on the bigger field, on one, two, three, four. We fully intend to expand.
Utilize them everywhere.
Oh, yes.
But if we can make, if we can move that up, then... And I, we looked at one time, it's so hard to tell. But I mean, even Louis.
There's a hill there.
Yeah.
Two for roll. We talked about rolling that. You made the perfect athlete, Seth. I want to point that for him.
That's true, yeah. And the original plan is just to stay out of the wetlands. We're kind of planning a green monster type feature for that field anyway, because we're going to have a taller fence to make it playable, like it plays at 200. It'll have to actually, the fence line doesn't have to be at 200 feet. Play 180 with a 20-foot tall fence, and it would be the same, same distance. They go the way the ball travels, not the way it actually be.
No?
I'm just going to ask a question. Really, we can see about the travel of all clubs. Who brings the revenue in here? How many fields would this diagram show and be digging up in this contract type game?
For the adults, if we had adult tournaments, the board would. And actually, the biggest one on that field, women can play on that side, that's a 200 feet field. So adults, women can play, and kids can play on all ways of.
On all the property that's used for the ball field?
Yeah. For the ball field?
Ball field, no.
Did he make it to that?
Can you give me a very close comparison? 242 is one of the...
I'd like to.
Can you put the parking lot? Can you add the parking lot? We got the park lot.
Yeah, that even that would be about, I think it was like 14, 14 for the big field.
Okay, so how many, how big is space we going to have after the parking lot? Is it going to be adding or not to cut it?
Yes, yeah. There's a ratio that you do per team, per field, you know, per time. And we had plenty of parking on the initial site.
Do you have a number on how many parking spaces in the big room?
I don't remember right offhand. It's in the board.
You can get it here because there's a lot of...
The bottom part, I know the parking lot, the part of grain that's calling board is the square one on the bottom.
Three or four total.
It's that one. Yeah, that's 60 right there.
Can you build a parking lot at the floodplain?
You could build a parking lot at the floodplain. The most practical way to do it is keep the parking lot on the... We're looking at taking out the existing dirt that's there and rebuilding it. You need eight inches of depth for a parking lot, say four inches of gravel, four inches of asphalt. They've got eight inches of existing vegetation dirt. And rebuild the parking lot back in the same place or in the same ground.
And then walk with their checks. They can just have it off-site out of the floodplain. So then, on that ground, then the parking lots are in the flood?
Not the first phase. There's a parking lot up here in phase, or ahead of field one and two.
That'll be, that's the one that the part of grain is going to require.
And if you could do, you could build a pair of... Now, is your report just reflective of local ordinances that you, that you evaluate significant archeological stats in your evaluation? Yes, it's probably going to be.
We did. We looked at subject issues. We looked at federal issues, Army Corps of Engineers, State Art Quality Programs. And then we also met again, on Monday?
With Paul.
With Paul, our dealers we contracted.
It was Wednesday.
Oh, well.
Oh, well. He was still in town until about noon that day, so we met him out there to actually go over what we were proposing onsite.
In the areas that are red, you see those areas, the coral, those areas, we could go down to plow depth level, which is 12 to 18 inches.
All right, go down what do you do?
Say, if we stand about the top soil, we could excavate down 12 to 18 inches of plow depth.
He told us seven and a half because I asked him specifically about ground, he said blue ground cover and maybe one inch of soil. And if you did any grugging, you had to cut the tree stump off around the level. You could not excavate, you could not grug.
He didn't want the stump back.
Yeah, he told me, and I asked him specifically, how you rise, which is top. Well, he said one to two inches.
Right, and you're right.
That'll be.
Looking back, he did say that. He has reported reflects something there. And that's why I went to him specifically and said, in these red areas, what are our rules? He said plow depth and the stumps. He came back to the stumps, just cut them off flush. We talked to him about maybe grinding the stumps, they're originally stump out. And at this point, that's not an issue.
Go back to the youth field there, then. And I've got a list of things here. I just want to pick that up a little. See that club trees there in the middle?
Yes, sir.
And the, in the center, just the concession stand?
Okay.
How do you construct that concession stand with associated plumbing, electrical, water?
And lighting.
And lighting.
And lighting.
In that area?
Yeah, in that seizure area.
In that area, what we would have to do is bring our archaeologist back in and have him basically onsite while we're in that zone. If we're constructing power lines, utilities, water lines, sewer lines, buildings, he's going to be onsite to ensure that we don't have something that we need to either move around or to make sure we can do it in line with our regulations.
Let's be clear, that's reported. They didn't find anything in that. It was fire shooting.
That's, no, not right now, but I think they will come back to that once we get into that zone, as we start putting that stuff in.
Just like in Iowa school.
Yeah, we had to do that in Iowa school. You know, sample there.
The other thing you can do is bring in top field, top soil, and fill over it. Basically, it'll stay out of it. That's a lot of dirt. Might be easier just to get it, just come back and look at it, look at the sales or whatever you did.
Did he publish a report?
Yes, he presented it the other night. He presented it before we do yet.
Oh, I hadn't seen that.
But what Matt was saying is basically what you have to do, was what we had to do at the office school, put the sewer system in out there, is when you're excavating even a trench for a sewer line, you want to have an archaeologist there in case you run across anything that they think is significant. And if it is, then you stop. And basically what you do at that point in time is just probably reroute around that. If you couldn't build it up and go over the top of it, but you can do either one of those two things. That's what we get at Iowa, and they were out there for about a day. And after a day, they didn't find enough, and it was just five people, archaeologists out there in the fair on-site. But just to be fair, I think you need to be prepared if you're going to put in a line for any kind of utility, you need to have an archaeologist available to be there when you're actually doing that excavation, putting that line in.
In the midst of all of these fields, you can see trees. You're talking about removing trees, and I have seen the move of all things to make those trees. So if you stump grind down, down right to the ground, maybe I know they're going to knock down some of the stuff.
What we're thinking, Mr. Haven, is we'll cut the trees off flush with the ground and hire somebody to come in and grind. And then after grinding, remove all that material and replace it with some more field material. So then they see future issues any time that they have material. Archaeologists, did you say that it would be preserved if you didn't, if you... The other thing you can do is put fill material over them, conceal them all, and they'll be preserved and accessed.
There's going to be fill material available and ground on site support.
We have fill material available. We don't have it on-site.
You can send them to a company.
Exactly. They can, whatever it be, that midfield three.
That circle right there is flood plain?
That's our line. That's the article line. The floodplain is blue, and it comes around the outside of the field.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Any other questions before we get these smart guys here? Or anybody that sits down and has anything to say? Anybody else?
I've got three questions. All else. Parking lots, private, some...
Please, keep asking, we could work.
Yeah, that's excellent report. Excellent presentation. Sir, can you knock? Matt, please. Gentlemen, just before we...
Well, I think at this particular point in time, I think we need to recall the last time we were convened here, there had been a motion made in the segment, and there was a discussion. And I think after the end of that discussion, there was a consensus to recess, so we get the information that's good heard and give the parties or the commissioner an opportunity to discuss the thing you discussed at this particular point in time. And if there is a desire for one or more commissioner to make any kind of motions at this point in time, I think that would be great. But I think, where are you standing right now to the standpoint of this contract with, what's the technical name of the owner of that property? Just a clarification. It is Willow Creek Boater Coach Estates LLC is the owner. You have a contract with them to purchase and for them to sell for a given price. That contract requires you close on before the 30th of this month, unless during the examination period, which we're still in, which would end at the end of April 15, this board should decide that it does not want to go through that process. So we're obligated to close unless during this examination period, which expires at the end of the 15th of April, the board makes a decision not to go. So we're obligated to close unless during this examination period, which expires at the end of the fifteenth of April, the board makes a decision not to go through.
Do there any other questions? I hope that is.
I've got one legal, but there's a good narrative here. When I came on board, I was involved, is, in one meeting, it was claimed by the law, Mr. Haven, Commissioner Haven.
So I'm not there.
He's the lawyer. Yeah. Commissioner Bill had recused himself on actions and discussions on this, can you clarify that?
I can tell you, uh, at the time, it came time to vote on the, uh, on the contract itself, he did abstain from the vote. And at that particular point in time, uh, there were four votes in favor of the contract. I had received a call last night to, uh, to determine what, uh, the deal's obligation would be or would not be in relation to any kind of voting decision. And, uh, and whether or not he, uh, had a, a conflict of interest that would have hidden him under the criminal law of the state to, uh, participate in this, in this transaction. And I did look into that issue, and my opinion, uh, which was, uh, which I checked with the school government is, he does not have any kind of criminal law conflict of interest. In this particular situation, uh, you, you have sort of a typical analysis, you first look at a statute, it's, uh, fourteen dash two thirty-four, to determine whether or not if, uh, there was involvement by, uh, a, a particular commissioner in violation of the statute, could actually constitute a, a misdemeanor to, to be involved. In my analysis of this, I did not find what Mr. Bill would be in violation of the statute, I contacted the school government, I spoke with Ms. Ray Bluestein at the school government, and she confirmed my opinion on that particular point. Uh, she did remind me that there's sort of a typical analysis to, to the question, and, uh, the, the other part, and I think this may be what you're asking me about.
Just want to, so what makes you believe?
Yeah, basically, you, under, uh, fourteen two thirty-four, there is no contract. Is there any other questions?
Is that the second part?
No, the, the, the second part of the analysis is, uh, there is always, if, if one or more individuals on the board feel like they don't need to be involved in a decision-making process, they can ask this board to excuse them to vote, but in the absence of actually being excused by the board to vote, they are permanently obligated to vote. Unless they would be in violation of this first statute that I was talking to you about, does that make sense?
And I hope that there is a.
There, in other words, there is a permanent obligation for each member of this board to vote. And, and unless they have been excused by the remainder or the front office, unless they would be in violation of the criminal statute.
I hope that is.
A little more clear than most.
Well, as we stood last time on this, I think you've made most of this plan. And all I'm going to say, there's a lot of ways to get to look at this, there's a lot that we can look in the future of. I'm the first person that would love to see us have baseball fields facing for our children. I would love to see us have baseball fields that we could bring here for economic development. And I've stated that the last time, or this time, I don't think the topic worked, what we were looking at, the part of due diligence, we didn't look at it. If I ask what they roll, it's throw me out the door, and I'll make the motions to decline behind this front.
Their motion to decline the, uh, contract, for, for him?
I, I assume what he really intended to do is to, for the, for the county to make the decision to not go through and notify the seller as required by the statute in order to.
I think that's, three of ten. We have a second, is there a?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
But Commissioner, uh, Haven, your, your reasoning is that you don't think the property's worth what the county's doing to pay for it?
There's several things, that's one of the reasons, I don't feel like, okay, so I was asking, uh, Mr., well, I was going to ask, I was thinking some of what Andy Gaff was talking about here while I'm building, and I was going to ask this question about how many acres is usable? There's twenty-eight acres of land out there. And we've got a bunch of it, it's not usable, it's a piece of property worth fifty thousand dollars later, right now, worth forty thousand dollars later. And I was making my decision to make that motion, but I feel like the part we would use is not worth it.
Be in discussion.
I will discuss, I will discuss, no, I appreciate you, Matt, Jack. We've looked at this thing, uh, economically, emotionally, the other night, and we'll look at it a little bit scientifically. I passed out a document, there's some bridge adjustment that's there, I get to plop on my guns, I lose, my guns, I lose stock sometimes, so I'll put it on paper. I hope I'm not clinging to time, Mr. Chairman, it'll take three or four minutes. Thank you. Simply my reason for opposing the purchase of Park Meadows. Uh, those that did, although my background is environmental health, I do land, land development consulting and construction, so I'm not some bookkeeper trying to tell you about a piece of property. This project is nine forty-seven point nine four, total acreage, of which seven point six acres are in the flood plain. Twenty-seven point nine acres are in the hundred year or five hundred year flood plain, and those lines are currently closed, amazing. That leaves us twelve point four four acres that are not in the flood plain, floodway. And out of that twelve point four four acres, we have two significant archaeological sites, and that in, survey area, this today, it's about three to four acres. So we'll take the smaller, that's three acres, we'll cut down, that leaves us nine point four four acres. Out of that, we have a civic system for sixteen hundred fifty gallons a day, plus a repair area, that's close to another acre, so we're down to about eight acres of property that's not affected by either a flood plain ordinance or the, uh, archaeological studies. And I've listed, just going down through there, cookie cutter, the following, proposed improvements are in the flood plain, one hundred fifty-six and three hundred fifty-four parking spaces, one of two waste water pump stations, bathroom facility, fatten gangs, parts of both cloverleaf fields, the entrance road off, the multi-purpose field. And the following improvements are in the, uh, archaeological sites, part of the adult ball field, the youth ball fields, youth concessions on an ounce or a box, hard surface moved youth sport court, and covered pavilion with picnic tables. Other engineer recommended improvements which requires trench excavation and soil displacement includes twenty-six hundred fifty feet of eighteen inch and thirty-six inch storm drain pipes, significant impact, uh, twenty-seven hundred linear feet of sewer line, twenty-two hundred linear feet of water line, underground electrical throughout the park, and then the fifty-seven thousand square yards of imported field, which is six inch stone, prime coat, tar and chat road, parks, parking and roads. And part of this will have to go on the flood plain. If imported field cannot be placed in the flood plain, an earthquake disturbance can occur in the four significant archaeological sites, and that's based on the information I got from Paul Webb. I, I wish we were on the same page here, there was, I was specific, he said, no dig zone. And now, if he's changed on that, that, that scares me just a little bit, big difference in a plow line, which is typically twelve, fourteen inches, and no dig. So I'm not disputing anything, I'm just saying that throws me a curve at the last minute. Uh, that was the significant ridge area of artifacts, is your topsoil, your haywire, so he's throwing me a curve there. Ball field playing surfaces must be improved by mixing the sand and the current field with existing soil, and you do under drains under ball fields?
Some do, some don't, uh, i- if you have significant fall, I mean, where they drain themselves, you don't have.
Five hundred.
None of the ones that we have now do, and everybody knows how much rain we got last night.
In the flood.
In the flood plain, every, every field we have out there is, uh, is in a flood plain.
Did you build it today?
Uh, yeah. From where they stand, I, I'm assuming.
No, that's not, we're gone, thank you, we're gone. It's been stated that we can do this project for much less than the four point nine million projected cost, we'll be paying an engineer twenty-eight thousand dollars to give us that cost in a preliminary state. If we ignore his estimates based on his advice, his, his estimate for based on current market cost, we just throw that money away. I'm against this project, this property, I don't think it's the ideal site for this, but I am in favor, I'm in favor of improving our existing fields, as I said the other night. The fields we got are in not good shape, unless they fix them in the last three weeks. And I'd like to see this board work with the youth baseball and softball organizations to construct new fields in the county on block. And this information was gathered from Alliance Engineering Consulting and the TRC, or the, uh, TRC Environmental Report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you. I'm just kidding.
I'm going to just state a few things, I put a few notes together in eight two, and I just scratched a few board out while we're sitting here. We've heard a little information this morning about due diligence and how long we've been working this property. Since I've become a board member, it's been almost a conversation of every single meeting we've had, or we've guaranteed. We've studied it, uh, in my opinion, very aggressively, over the past two years, eleven months, four, I think, that's, that's very good, indeed. But I, I went through a series of questions, uh, through myself, and I'm going to read them back to y'all, and my, my thinking was, number one is, is there a need for this facility? I think overwhelmingly, we have heard that, yes, there is a need for more builds in this county, particularly in adult recreation, especially in softball, which I play. I can verify for myself, if the N S M is still there. Is it financially feasible to do this project without raising taxes, which I would definitely be against? We have a testimony on that, from both our finance staff and our county management, that it is feasible. Is it feasible, and question number three, is it feasible to build the proposed plan without changing any rules, regulations, ordinances? So a testimony on that, and we have been passed, yes, it is feasible. Question number four, is there a better site for this type of facility in making county? Maybe, uh, but so far, we haven't been presented with it. I know that the search for this site was going on a long time before I came on this board, and, uh, it seems like a good fit, again, that's my opinion. What's the overall cost going to be to develop it? I've heard the opinion, quote, opinion of two million, and I've heard the engineer's opinion of five million. I don't think we've investigated that thoroughly enough to make a determination on that. But personally, my opinion is, is I don't think we're going to find a site that's flatter or more suitable for fields in the county, where we're not going to require the quantity of grading and the quantity of work, uh, to build it for any less money. I'm not aware of anything flatter or better suited for that. But again, it may be out there, I'm just not familiar with it, as in, well, my opinion. Question number six, is there a beneficial economic impact? Testament, took long testimony from our E D C director stating that, yes, there will be a positive economic benefit. Question number seven, negative feedback. The negative feedback that I've been hearing, and I confirmed with Mr. Haven a second ago, there is that we're overpaying for it. The last appraisal that I've seen, the only appraisal I've seen on the property, it was for seven hundred and thirty-three thousand four. I'm not at all so expert by any means, but I have to trust those figures, and banks do, like, legal and dialogue, a lot of places are required to have that, so. That's what that appraisal was for, and we'll define it for five hundred and fifty thousand, so based upon that, it's probably a good deal. You know, opinions left out, everybody's got that. Question number eight, what part of step up and help us pace this? Initial word is yes, uh, I don't guess going for fact until we purchase and we go, look forward to it, if that happens. Based upon past history with the county Highlands and what little research I've done, it sounds like they will pay for it, and I'll be fifty percent of that, so in actuality, the county will be paying for two hundred and fifty thousand for the purchase of this park, so. Based upon my belly button, uh, I think it's a good deal, I, I have, other than the fact that we may be overpaying for that, I have written a testimony, not, not before. I heard Paul talk a second ago about, uh, archaeology and the flood plain and the problems associated with that, and, uh, based, my understanding is, is that anywhere we go in this county, uh, we're going to be dealing with archaeological issues, and so we're going to. Public organization, uh, you know, flood plain might be able to get around, but generally, we'll get out of flood plain in this county, and we get into rolling, uh, terrains, and then we'll get into storm drainage issues, so. I can definitely appreciate and understand that, that stuff every day, it's something, but I, I, other than they're overpaid, and I just can't come up with any other thing. You know, I have an interest too, about opening up our county checkbook to do this, however, it doesn't look like we're going to have to raise taxes, we have to find some way to do it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have some thoughts.
It's been four years since we built the ball field, it's been a, for the public, that those children miss it, four years. We have bloods, has happened on this floor, and before, I was on this floor, before South Adams came to work in making county, uh, workplace to build ball fields. You need them dinner, you need a big horse on that. I do agree with, with me, but you know one thing, that existing ball fields that we have are the problem, and I would like to, and I've seen of them, I think they look about, and you're expecting that. I think it's a good moment. I think the school is a part of these, and the school board has to be involved, and I think we do, or, uh, as that property is putting up its federal, to work on the school. But the school board, uh, that would be their decision on most of it. But I would like to bring that up, we will, uh, I think we can look back, if we decide to throw a project here, uh, forty years ago, if we look back, and we were senior in school, Jack Moore, and myself, and Danny Decker, we were, we picked up rocks every day, right there? Under the guidance of Danny Decker, and, uh, I think we'd be able to look back, what if we didn't have the foresight, they would criticize them? What if we didn't have, they didn't have the foresight, like Paul says, thank goodness they built them, what would we have? One time, we had a state of the art friendship, which is now no longer, we've outgrown that, and we're going to continue that. And the more these kids we could put out there, and adults, I played until, I don't know, a few years later, but I could play, it can be younger. But I think that we can look back one day, is this going to be free? No, it is not. But, you know, we talked about the twenty-eight acres, well, we pursued that, did you hear Southland pursued that, and tried to see what we could do? The chief was at the desk, we got them a grant with seven hundred and something thousand dollars?
Seven hundred and ninety.
You got it?
I do.
Seven hundred and something thousand dollars, this is down at South Lake, and, uh, and that was before we got into the archaeological, uh, problem, which that came back as saturated, uh, which means, Mr. Andrew, you don't do anything, well, well, but.
This is on the South.
This is South Lake's property. And you can see where we, we looked at that, and we're already laughing, and, because that, that was an idea that, I just couldn't believe we had that, this property wasn't used yet, for that. So, yeah, we went gung ho, well, we got gung ho. So you can see, uh, and that's the problem, if we can, tonight in Cherokee, North Carolina, there are nineteen teams. So you can see, and that's the problem, if we can, tonight in Cherokee, North Carolina, there are 19 teams in a tournament in Cherokee. The facility not near what we're going to have, I think we'll look back on our decision tonight. It may be an economic impact our county benefited our children for 10 years to come. I think we've done the due diligence and looked, you know, like Paul, I, I'm like Paul, I wish we could take this property and use it. But basically, we can't. And this is South Lake, it's just not feasible. Not only with this, you're probably looking at estimates, and I know, Jack, you weren't here, but we did get an estimate on archaeological. It was in the news.
It was a phase one, it was a phase one done on it, and you'd have to go to a phase two, and then that may lead to.
Phase three. Can I say our board? So, you know, I will support this project, and you talked about the reason why I refused myself to read the book, because I was making bank, was, was involved at, to the extent they are donating part of the payment of this property. Not that I'm going to benefit, the bank's going to donate to it. And because the bank's involved, and I sat on the board of making bank, I didn't want to be known, even in a slight, that there had been property. But to benefit from it, now the bank is actually giving, contributing to the project. With that, Mr. Chairman, I thought about that.
I hope we're beating things about to say, it's been some excellent discussion. I wanted to reiterate that this $5.1 billion, I agree with Paul, but that didn't happen from the engineers. We paid him to do the engineer, and basically helped us to see if everything would fit there, and all that, we didn't necessarily pay, it was just an estimate. I think, and also that is for a whole lot of things on that property that we need to discuss. And we, all we talked about is all of it. I don't recall any discussion, other than you got through some other stuff. But all I've been involved in talking about, concerned about, is building ball fields. And I'll make that clear. So I'm not going to raise my hand, allocate $5.1 billion to build all that stuff, that I've never said anything. That's another discussion for another day, I'll make that clear. Second, discussion about the value of the property. I would reiterate a little bit what Mr. Tate said, but I've got that appraisal. It was done by Guy Development Associates, Kevin Spivey did, and it was done July 5th, 2011. I realize it's a year and a half, approaching two years ago. But I talked to Guy, I talked to Kevin about it, that was, we were already in the recession, okay? Property values had already gone down. So I thought, okay, you value this appraisal, it says it's worth $733,000. I'm not a real estate appraiser, I know very little about it. But I asked him point blank, did that appraisal have gone down more than 25% and maybe it made it up? I don't know if it's still worth $733,000. I guess my question is, is it worth it? And the answer I got is, yes. So there's two, the third thing was, part of our initial discussion was that we were going to apply for these part of grades. And I talked to Roger West about that, I talked to Jim Davis, and they indicated that those grades were better. They thought we'd have a good chance at it. And that a lot of that money, this was for Roger, he said, it's time some of that recreation money come back to the map, we're paying tax.
And what did Mr. West say, I don't know, he appropriate, he's only appropriate.
So I, before I would get on board to support this, I talked to Jim Davis and Roger West, and said, will you support this? Politically, we need them, okay? They're the, they're the party that's in control.
Well, they suck with the people.
So I got a letter from, and I would read it. Dear Chairman, this is from Senator Davis. Dear Chairman Corbin, this is from Corbin, I'm in full support of the purchase of old Park Meadows Farm for $550,000. I'll skip some of this, and you mentioned the talk to evaluation. And he said that the purchasers, purchasers, which is the county, would be eligible for a 50% match in multiple park track. Making the net purchase price $275,000. In addition, there would be addition, there would be matching duties for development property. I fully support the purchase, the construction of two four-leaf clover ball fields, and the availability of future recreation space. And he based that on a conversation, I never mentioned anything to the two four-leaf clover ball fields. This project represents tremendous positive economic impact for Bank of County. As 130 tournament could bring in $250,000 and a potential of having 25 to 30 of these events, and a totally economic impact could be over $6 million. Again, I'm in full support of purchase, available to assist in seeing this project forward, and I read that as he's going to help us get it. Okay? And I'll own it too, that I won't read it, but I got a letter from Roger West that says exactly. So with those guys' support, I think we can get that part of money. And I'd like to think we can get more than one of them. To refer out for $500,000, this cycle, there's supposed to be meeting in May, that are, and based on whether we buy the property or not, we already have the application in.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say a few more things here, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone has said up here on this board, if we do anything, we're going to make a change. And I know we all got dipped out, looks on how we're doing. I know Commissioner Bailey, he talked about all these ball fields in place. It's not been kept up, the problem is, we shouldn't have been all alone. Some of this stuff took care of a lot of the matters, we talked to school board, I ain't talking nobody. We ain't talked ourselves, I just right there, fixing school board.
They own.
Well, it might be, there's other places we can have a thing about this, but out here trying to do all we can, get the best we can. Our county, there's a lot of things behind us that needs to be fixed, I know there are. But I started biz in Sherrattville one great time, I didn't haul old duck truck load in the big pit, and I'm looking at it like this. Financially, I've got a damn best speed, but that's too western property. I'm not saying we got real ball fields. I'm just saying, where's this spending going in? You have need back there, that makes no difference to property. It's not worth exactly, it wasn't worth what it was. But anyway, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go this way. Ladies and gentlemen, first, I'm going to go to my lady. I've been hauling hikers up down the hill all day long, get around firstly, and.
And we appreciate you speaking on this.
Believe it or hell, I was going to say, I said, come on, go meet one time up here, and she said, I want to go somewhere expensive, so I pulled in at the gas station.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
Motion, I'm clear about motion on the.
The, the motion by Mr. Haven is to, statement, is to exercise the practical ability to withdraw, withdraw or end this contract and deliver appropriate notice to the city. With that stated, any other discussion? Security none, I'll be in favor of Mr. Haven's motion, same time, same opposed. Motion favors, 32. So we, at this point, we'll proceed.
At this point in time, I have to, down deep, prepare for proof. And then you're good at that.
I'll go here all day.
We still have, we still have the legal work to do as far as the title and license first, and insurance, and all that stuff to do to add to those on. And currently, that's what we're hoping for.
I'm just going to make a quick recommendation, I don't want to keep us long, but I just, we kept hearing this about the 25 acres of South Lake. Would it be okay with y'all, if we ask Jack to pull together all property that's going to be unused this month, 10 hours?
No, we just did that.
I haven't seen.
Yeah, we, we had to sell all this property we ain't using. Potentially, what we need to do is, they ain't using it, just let them know we need somebody to pay taxes. That's all I want to call the service.
Just to clarify that, we do, we have put together a way inventory of all the property the county owns, we've got books about that fish in the office. It goes with everything from large tracks to the tracks where, which is big enough to put a tower on for a life of the airport. We do have various surplus by four commissioners, and they are listed on the county website for sale. We had actually one property that the county owned in that hill, that you did sell. We've had recently some interest in this property, the county owns, and that church road, we considered by, they're county owned sometime back, that the county surplus, they've got some interest in it. So there, there are probably several pieces of property, including the old garage on our 64. The way I've just been up for sale for quite some time. But all the surplus property the county has been declared surplus by four county commissioners, is listed for sale on the website. And if anyone is interested in making an offer on that, offer could be taken and brought to the board for y'all's consideration.
What we can, I would just like to.
If you get a chance, take a look at the ones on the website, we do have some other property there.
Like this 25 acres as well?
That 25 acres has probably not been declared surplus. It may have been part of the finance, but it's not like it's good.
I think y'all got my gist, man.
Jim, you ready to go? Any other question? I appreciate the period of debate, and I'm going to make one closing statement. One of my favorite guys, I go to church with, is David Schillman, right? And I like old Tim. We voted to build an addition on the same school face, during COVID. Phil, Phil voted against it, and he had reasons. So the next Saturday, we showed up, and we had a ground breaking, we were going to do some digging, and do some things, and Phil showed up with his shovel, his hand. I said, I thought you were against this. He said, I was, but group voted to do it, and I'm part of the group moving forward, so I hope we can be that way. I appreciate it, you guys, you guys' opinion, I'm just going to say, I appreciate. But you move forward in a positive way, and that's just the way I believe we do things, I think I'll like it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we don't.
No, not adjourned, we're going to recess today.
Not if I was mainstream.
Well, not if. We're going to recess until Thursday, April 18th, next week. 16:00 AM. Okay, do we have a?
Where at? Where?
If we have a motion, we got this. Motion, need a motion, need a motion to recess.
No, we.
I'll favor recess there.